Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order for October 11th, 2022. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you could please remain standing, we have Jim Brown from the Lake Church here this evening for our invocation. Welcome.
Aye, thank you. Let's pray together. Lord, as we gather, remind us daily of all for which we have to be thankful. Thank you for the mayor and the council persons who are willing to serve on the city council. Help this council to make wise decisions which are thoughtful and good for this community. Help us to help the businesses in this city so they might provide the goods and services that the people need and desire. Lord, nationally, we sing "God Bless America" and through their years, you have. Thank you. We read "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord; may it be again." We pledge "One Nation Under God." Lord, help that to be true today. Lord, heal the divide today in our nation. Help us to do unto others as we would have them do unto us. Help us to choose to treat each other with respect and kindness even when we disagree about issues. Help us, Lord, to be more thankful, grateful people, and help us to do that by practicing Thanksgiving more than just once a year in November. We ask all these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. You can be seated. Mr. Scollack, could we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Musgrove, here. Councilmember Nunez.
Present.
Councilmember Walton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. Thank you. Okay, moving on to proclamations and presentations. If the council could join me in the front of the dais, that'd be great. So, we really enjoy making sure that we are recognizing all of our community members that are doing great things in San Marcos and beyond. And tonight, we are so excited about the Red Ribbon Commission that we are able to honor so many people that are involved in this, that are working hard for our community to keep our community safe. Back in 2016, I was actually recognized with the Red Ribbon Award in the county. It was such an honor to represent our city, but it's nothing like all of our young people that are out every single day making sure that they are bringing attention and awareness to this, and also the San Marcos Prevention Coalition. We really appreciate all that they do. So, today, the San Marcos City Council hereby does recognize San Marcos Unified School District Schools and Red Ribbon Week, which is October 23rd through the 31st, 2022, whereas Red Ribbon Week offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, and whereas the San Marcos City Council has made a strong commitment to alcohol, tobacco, and other drug prevention education and activities, and whereas we recognize that alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use can bring alienation, academic failure, violence, and hopelessness to the youth of San Marcos. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of San Marcos, California, joins other cities throughout the nation to declare October 23rd through 31st, 2022 as Red Ribbon Week, and encourages all of our citizens to join our commitment to a healthy, drug-free community in which to raise a generation of healthy, drug-free youth. So, I'm going to call all of the schools down, and we have a lot represented this evening. We're going to start with Nob Hill. Come on down.[612.54][612.54](APPLAUSE) Hello. How are you all? Congratulations, and thank you for your effort. You guys get to go and shake everyone's hand and see that your principal's here today. Go ahead, shake everyone's hands. Oh, yeah. And we're going to scooch over this way so we have the background. Hi, thank you.[675.32][675.32](APPLAUSE) Wait, do you want to stand here? And we can do all the schools together, too? Do them individually, and then you open. Yeah, okay, so how about we have you just stand right over here, and we're just going to keep moving back and forth, and when everyone's done, we'll just do it that way. Okay, next school is Lacosta Meadows Elementary. Hello, good to see you. Thank you for coming this evening. You want to go ahead and give everyone else a handshake? Mission Hills High School. Thank you so much for coming. Hey, we'll get quicker. San Alamo Middle School. Hello. Okay, we're going to come right on over here if you did it, everyone. Oh, wait, we forgot to call for them.[866.11][866.11](APPLAUSE) Something's wrong. Little too quiet. San Marcos Middle School. Thanks for making it in the rain, all of you. Thank you so much. Woodland Park Middle School. Did we miss anyone? San Marcos High School. Okay, we'll find it. Ah, I found it. San Marcos High School. Now, we're going to do a joint picture with everyone, so come on over, guys.
Elementary school up front for sure. Middle school.
Well, they might be short like me, so. Oh, yeah, Sharon. Sorry, Sharon. The elementary kids. I know. Let your parents have their proud moments.
You know what, actually, it would look so much better.
Well, that's what I was trying to do. All right, let's scooch over. That's okay. Letty, would you like to come up and say something?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Letty Robles, and I'm here representing the San Marcos Prevention Coalition. It's a coalition that, along with many community members, was formed over 10 years ago to work towards, in collaboration with the whole community, work towards alcohol and drug-free youth. And I would love to get back to pre-pandemic numbers where we fill this room with students from all over the district, but little by little, we're getting back to normal, and we want to thank you for coming. And I also want to thank the San Marcos City Council and the San Marcos Unified School District, who has always collaborated in all of our efforts. And thank you, parents, and the whole community.
I'm not sure. I think I have a certificate for you, but I have to go through all those to maybe. Oh, perfect. You're right. When we have all the people with all these associated, it's a lot of fun. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, so this is actually our favorite part of our city council meetings, just for all of you out there. If you don't know, again, we love to recognize people in the community, and especially, too, when it's one of our employees, which we don't do too often, as often as we'd like, but we have actually, one of our employees was actually won a San Diego Real Hero Award. So, I'm going to tell you a little bit about that. So, do you want to come on down? Kenneth? Kenneth Kim, he's one of our fire department. And then I'm going to put you on the spot and tell us a little bit about this. But the San Marcos City Council does hereby present Kenneth Kim with an honorable certificate of recognition for being awarded the Disaster Services Hero of 2022, and this is countywide, in the San Diego Real Heroes Awards. Kenneth's work with the Red Cross in support of the Sound the Alarm program installed free smoke alarms and provided education to community members about home fires. One of the smoke alarms that Kenneth installed saved the life of a resident who later experienced a fire. We, the City Council of the City of San Marcos, hereby recognize him for his dedication to the San Marcos community. And if any of you have never had a fire in your home, I hope you haven't. I remember when I was a kid in kindergarten, well, actually, it was preschool, I came home on the bus and my house was on fire. So, it was great to see the firemen there, but, you know, smoke detectors really do make a big difference in our community, and the fact that you came up with this program and implemented it, we're so proud of you, but I'd like for you to tell us a little bit about it.
Yeah, of course.
Thanks.
All right, well, thank you, guys. Yeah, so I really appreciate the opportunity, but, you know, first and foremost, it's definitely a team effort. So, just like city staff and the Red Cross and the city leadership, without those folks, none of this would have been possible. But really, it's the Red Cross. Back in 2018, I reached out to one of their program managers who was running the Sound the Alarm program, and it's an awesome program. Pretty much, they go to your house, and if you need a smoke alarm, they'll do an assessment, and they'll give you one for free. They'll also do bed shaker alarms for hard of hearing, and they have all sorts of different devices, and it's 100% free. So, I thought, you know what, like, free is great. So, I might as well ask them. And, yeah, they partnered with our city, and then we were able to do many large events, mainly in mobile home parks, because that's really where the high-risk communities are. And we've insulted $1,000, so it's been really cool.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on to the rest of our meeting here. We're moving on to the consent calendar. Do any council members wish to pull any items on consent? No?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. We're moving on to oral communications, which I don't believe we have any. Nope. Okay, moving on to ordinances. Number nine, ordinance number 2022-1525, amending San Marcos Municipal Code, Chapter 17.64, to adopt the 2022 California Fire Code and declaring local conditions to amend certain provisions of the same. Do we have a... Mrs. Peak?
That would be me. Madam Mayor, thank you. Development Services has the next one. This one's mine. Presented for the council's consideration this evening is an ordinance updating Chapter 17.64 of the San Marcos Municipal Code to incorporate provisions of the California Fire Code that have been revised since Chapter 17.64 was updated in 2019, and to make revisions to specified provisions to address local conditions. With respect to minor revisions, one change reflected in the red line version of Chapter 17.64 that's included in the agenda packet is to change references to the cited California Fire Code provisions from 2019 to 2022, because it's a biennial update, and the references to the international fire codes from 2018 to 2021. So, there's a little bit more time associated with that one. There are also several spelling corrections and formatting changes, because you always want your municipal code to be tip-top shape. There are also revisions to the section numbers of the California Fire Code provisions that are being modified by the municipal code. You will have seen those in Section 17.64.100 and 17.64.110. There are really only two substantive proposed amendments. One is the addition to Section 17.64.200, inserting language relating to automatic fire extinguishing systems for residential R2 and R3 occupancies, and providing the fire code official with the ability to require such systems as well as associated requirements under specified circumstances. For example, when a building addition is more than 50% of the existing building, or when the altered building will exceed a fire flow as calculated under state standards. 17.64.210, which sets forth the standard for mid-rise buildings, has been supplemental with provisions authorizing the imposition of a requirement to provide updated emergency response maps, including geo reference building plans, pre-plans, and GIS format, and specifications for data deliverables. And those are the fire department's recommendations for you. That concludes the report, and in the event council has any questions, we'd be happy to respond.
Thank you, Mrs. Peak. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Peak? Nope. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
All second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any notes? Nope. Okay, motion passes. Moving on to number 10, ordinance 2022-1526, amending San Marcos Municipal Code Title 17, Buildings, Construction, and Related Activities, and adopting local amendments to the California Building Code. And there is.
David Yorba, I'm going to introduce David to you. David's our acting building official. He's going to do the presentation on this ordinance.
Thank you, David.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Jack mentioned, my name is David Yorba, and I am your interim building official for the city. Before you tonight is the ordinance, which will officially adopt the state mandated 2022 building codes, along with adopting the California building codes. We're also updating Chapter 17 of our municipal code, and this is to reflect the code changes made at the state level by the California Building Standards Commission. And let me to provide a little bit of history and context on this subject. So, every three years, the California Building Standards Commission reviews and updates the applicable codes as they relate to new construction and property maintenance. And prior to the city adopting the new building codes, our building department staff reviews local amendments and updates Chapter 17 of our municipal code to make sure it reflects the changes made at the state level. Now, the state also allows the city to make local amendments, and these are based on our climate, geology, and topography. At this time, this proposed ordinance does not propose any new amendments, and we will continue to carry forward with all the existing amendments. Now, the 2022 California Building Code will become effective January 1st, 2023. So, this will conclude my presentation, and I'll be happy to address any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you, David. Does anyone have any questions? Okay.
Just one quick one.
Yes, council member.
Page seven, one of the red line entries is for the time of construction is permitted. Is that a change, or are we just adding it there for clarification?
Just added for clarification.
Thank you.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Do you approve?
Second. Okay, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any notes? No, motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. Okay, public hearings. Ordinance number 2022-1527, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Marcos, California, amending Title 20 of the San Marcos Municipal Code relating to implementation of the 2021 through 2029 housing elements. And Mr. Faraci? And Mr. Faraci?
Okay, good evening, Mayor Jones, council members. Hope you're all doing well tonight. Tonight, we're requesting the city council adopt amendments to the zoning ordinance. The amendments are being requested to implement programs within the recently adopted housing element. On July 13th, 2021, the city council adopted the 2021-2029 housing element, consistent with the requirements of state housing law. The housing element is comprised of a housing plan, which includes goals, policies, and programs that the city will implement to address the constraints and needs, and a background report which identifies the nature and extent of San Marcos's housing needs. The housing plan portion includes several programs requiring updates to the zoning ordinance. Specifically, the housing plan includes three programs that require updates to the code. Program 10 of the housing element requires updates to the density bonus chapter of the zoning ordinance for consistency with recently adopted state laws. Program 11 updates the zoning ordinance as it pertains to reasonable accommodations. And Program 21 requires zoning ordinance updates to address specialized housing, including but not limited to low-barrier navigation centers, supportive housing, employee housing, and farmworker housing. These changes are for consistency, as noted before, with state laws, and to help remove constraints from a variety of housing types. I'll now briefly go over the proposed ordinance changes. First, residential care facilities for elderly are defined in the zoning ordinance, currently defined in the zoning ordinance as continuing care retirement community. This use is only allowed, subject to a conditional use permit, in the R310 multifamily zone and in the senior residential zone with a director's permit. This requirement conflicts with state law provisions for large and small residential care facilities, and as such, residential care facilities for elderly will be regulated under the residential care facility use type in the zoning ordinance, allowing greater flexibility on where these types of facilities may go. Assembly Bill 101 requires jurisdictions to further streamline approval of eligible low-barrier navigation center applications in areas zoned for mixed use and multifamily residential zones. Low-barrier navigation centers are currently not permitted nor defined in the zoning ordinance and need to comply with the current emergency shelter operational requirements detailed in the zoning ordinance. Therefore, the zoning ordinance is being updated accordingly. Next, consistent with state law requirements, the zoning ordinance is being updated to allow supportive and transitional housing to be a byright use in mixed-use zones. Supportive and transitional housing is already permitted in our code in residential zones. The State Employee Housing Act requires the zoning ordinance to address state requirements for allowing employee housing. The ordinance will be updated to define employee housing separate from agricultural worker housing and clarifies that employee housing for six or fewer employees be treated the same as a single-family dwelling land use. The zoning ordinance is also being updated to revise the term farm-employee housing to qualified worker housing. State law also requires that qualified worker housing of no more than 36 beds or 12 units be treated and permitted consistent as an agricultural use, which we currently do in the code. There's also provisions for allowances for streamlined ministerial, for approval for qualified worker housing when certain criteria are met. Those streamlining provisions will now be referenced in the zoning ordinance. Next, the zoning ordinance has been updated to include a new chapter to address and ensure compliance with Senate Bill 35 and Senate Bill 330, entitled Special Housing Applications. Under SB 330, qualifying housing projects can submit a preliminary application to the city, which must meet certain application criteria. Once a preliminary application is deemed complete, a project is vested and would only be subject to the standards in effect at the date that the project was deemed complete. The other portion of the chapter applies to the SB 35. The additional language is consistent with SB 35 provides for streamlining provisions, setting processing timeframes, and reducing approval requirements for projects that include affordable units that meet the criteria specified by state law. Projects will also be subject to objective design standards involving no subjective judgment and special parking allowances. Next, the zoning ordinance is proposed to update the code consistent with Assembly Bill 139, which requires the city to only require parking for emergency shelters to sufficiently accommodate all staff working at the shelter. Our ordinance currently requires parking for emergency shelters based on the number of beds in the facility rather than on-duty staff. The zoning ordinance will be updated to increase the height allowances in the multifamily R36 zone from 35 feet to 45 feet. While the R36 zone allows for a maximum density of 30 dwelling units per acre, it actually has a lower maximum building height than the city's other multifamily zone, the R36 zone, which allows less density at 20 dwelling units per acre. The change will help projects in the R36 zone to achieve the higher density allowances of the zone. Also, changes are proposed allowing adult residential care facilities within residential and commercial zones, consistent with other allowed residential care facilities. Currently, adult residential care facilities are only permitted in the senior residential zone. The ordinance has been modified to assure compliance with development standards of the zone in which the facility is located. Next, the proposed changes update the existing findings in the city's current reasonable accommodation chapter of the ordinance. The change removes the phrase "potential impact on surrounding uses" from the findings as consideration to grant or deny a request for reasonable accommodation. The requirement to evaluate the potential impact on surrounding uses can be considered a constraint to producing housing for persons with disabilities. Also, the time for a director to make a determination on a reasonable accommodation request will be updated from 45 days to 30 days. Lastly, the density bonus ordinance is being updated to be consistent with recent changes to state law. The changes will update the list of groups and housing types applicable to the density bonus law. The ordinance is also being updated to increase the maximum amount of density bonus a project can receive from 35% to 50%, and to reduce parking requirements for density bonus projects when calculating space for two- and three-bedroom units from two spaces per unit to one and a half spaces per unit. An addendum to the 2012 general plan update, EIR was prepared for the housing element adoption. Since the zoning ordinance changes implement the programs of the 2021 housing element, it was determined that the zoning changes could rely on the approved addendum, and no additional environmental review is necessary with this action. A notice of availability of the ordinance for review and comment was posted in the Union Tribune and on the city website from May 19th to June 17th, 2022. We also presented to the Building Industry Association for their comment. We received no public comment during the review period. On June 5th, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the amendments to the zoning ordinance. And staff's recommendation to the city council is to adopt ordinance 22-1527, amending the zoning ordinance related to implementation of the housing element. That concludes the presentation. With me here tonight is Ashley Broadkin. Ashley is from De novo Planning and helped in formulation of these ordinances. If you recall, De novo was also the city consultant on the housing elements as well.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Any questions? Yes?
Joe, if you wouldn't mind going back to slide 18, please. The density bonus, thank you. On the third bullet, first line to the end, it says Housing 42. Either one of those being stricken would change the focus of the change to the ordinance. Is it two or four?
I'm sorry, council member, what was that?
Yeah, first line, it says incentivize production of housing 42 include. Is it two or four, including? Or am I just not reading it correctly?
Update list of groups.
Because if it's four, it's focused specifically on that two, then it includes, but not exclusively two.
It's at the end of the third bullet point, Joe?
Mm-hmm.
The first line?
I think it's, yeah, to include.
So it's just a type over?
Yep.
Two.
Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
I have a couple of questions. Can you... I'm a little confused on this low-barrier navigation center. Do we have such a thing? Or this is just saying we have to allow such a thing? What is it?
That's correct. We currently don't have them defined in the ordinance.
Okay.
So it's saying that we need to allow them. They are defined as a low-barrier service-enriched shelter focused on moving people into permanent housing that provides temporary facilities while case managers connect individuals experiencing homelessness to income, public benefits, health services, shelter, and housing.
That makes more sense. I didn't get that out. Okay.
All in the wording. It's very complicated.
And then on the adult group homes, where the page is, but, oh, 16, page eight on the presentation. Didn't it used to be a maximum of six in a residential area? Or is this a total separate group of homes? I thought it was a maximum of six.
No, there wasn't. There isn't a maximum of six. There's a distinct... It distinguishes between six under one permit type and then more than six you can process with a different, yeah, conditional use permit.
Okay, so in any of the residential areas within the city, they could have homes with more than six?
Yes.
But it's a different permit that they have to get approval from, from whatever agency is involved?
Yeah, it's a... There's an entitlement that's involved in it.
Okay. Is that community care licensing or...?
Well, they have to go through state licensing if they are, you know, required, depending on the type of facility. But they'll also need to get an entitlement, seven or more, through the city, through planning. And then we'll have an opportunity to review it and condition it accordingly.
Okay, but this is the state law that allows it, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Okay. And how does any of this impact our current general plan update other than it's updating these, all of these elements, I guess, with the, or all of these zoning areas, correct?
Correct. It wouldn't update our existing general plan. We'll go ahead and, you know, obviously, we'll relook at the housing element to update that as needed as part of the general plan update. But the zoning ordinance, these provisions should remain, even when we update the zoning ordinance as part of the new general plan, because they're required through state law. So they'll remain in the code.
Okay, so this is not taking the place of the housing element that the group is working on? This is to bring us into compliance with the state?
That's correct.
That tells us...
That's correct.
What we should be doing. Okay. And then you answered that. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, council member.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. I have a question. It kind of dovetails Sharon's question about the general plan. And with regard to the density height review in R3 through 6 zones. So if I understand, the general plan at the moment, the group that's updating is relying on our old zoning calculations. Is that right?
Well, they're relying on the existing general plan designations, which are a little different than the zoning designations.
But when, if we adopt these tonight, that changes the number of units that can be placed on any particular piece of property. Is that fair to say? For example, if the height maximum goes from 35 to 45 feet and stories from two to three in areas zoned R3 through 6, that changes the number of units that we can get on that size property, right?
Right, it could change that. But in terms of the general plan, I think the way the general plan works, it's actually, as you've seen from the G-PAC meeting and going through those alternative maps, it's actually increasing densities citywide to some extent. So these changes on these few properties going from with a little higher density to the, isn't really going to make any type of significant change.
Okay. And offhand, can you, just for some perspective and context for me, what would be an example of a property in San Marcos that zoned R3 to 6?
Yeah, off the top of my head...
Yeah, I'd be looking on the spot. That's all right.
Yeah, without looking at a map, I wouldn't be able to tell you.
Okay. And then with regard to employee housing, item four, did you say that employee has not been defined yet? Is that right?
Well, I think we had farmworker housing defined, which we've changed to qualified worker housing. But employee housing, which is allowed, so you don't need to, it doesn't need to be, it could be independent from farmworker housing, is an allowance per state law. So we've basically defined it. And under that definition, we're saying that an employer who wants to house employees six or fewer in a single-family home, that that use be treated the same as any other single-family home in the area.
What might be an example of housing employees that's not agricultural or farm-related?
I know sometimes there are employers, I was actually talking to someone in, that they have employees that come in for certain companies that are working on projects and maybe working in the city like for six months or something like that. So an employer may house them, a group of them in a single-family dwelling.
Yeah, and you might see that, I don't know that we've ever seen it, but you see it common in health workers, so you have traveling nurses or traveling doctors. It's common in airport communities with flight crews. Those kinds of setups where there'll be multiple employees residing in a place like that.
Is there a process by which someone would have to go through to qualify for that kind of housing? Or is it just if they own the house and that's the purpose, they can do it? If there's any enforcement action, they'd have a defense, basically? Okay.
Correct.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, council member.
I have one more question.
Deputy Mayor.
So... So when the state says you... When we adopt these and this affords greater numbers within our community, is it something we have to do per the state? Or can a developer come up with a plan that is less numbers of people than this? Does that make sense?
Sorry.
It's fairly complicated, but if you're going to reduce density, you're going to have to find it someplace else. You're going to have to find that housing to be located or be able to be accommodated somewhere else.
So let's say there's a piece of property that allows 200 units on the property. And a developer comes in and says, you know, I really only want to put 150 in here for whatever the reason might be. Can we allow that? Or do they have to max out their numbers?
As long as it's consistent with the zoning ordinance, the developer would be allowed to do that. The state is tracking the number of units that is developed on basically every property that the city purchases, processes. So they're tracking the numbers of these, of units. And will be called to account at some point for the units that are not being built.
Right.
But in the end, our ordinances need to be consistent with state law.
Right. Right, okay.
So I had an actual clarification on that, kind of spurred by that question. So right now, our existing units is 33,999. I'm sorry, and our general plan is 42,705. So we had always talked about this, like, we know that the Creek District is not going to build to the density that we have in the general plan. So if we are adding more units based on this change in height, does that mean that still can be part of the number and we don't... does that mean that still can be part of the number and we don't have to actually locate those, those additional units elsewhere because they're already being absorbed within? Okay, I just want to make sure that actually made sense. Seems like it would. And so, so we can probably likely absorb everything that is here because we know the Creek District is not going to build to the intensity that we thought that it would originally. Right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Yes, council member, you had a question?
Marie has a question, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, where were you?
It's okay. Two questions. I got a little bit confused. Can you clarify for me, going back to Councilmember Walton's question about the, the change in the definition of employee versus agricultural worker? The change that we're making, is that somehow, would that preclude us from receiving or qualifying for, for instance, some of the state funding that's designated for agricultural housing? Can you clarify that?
Yes, yes, council member. No, it wouldn't preclude us from receiving any of that. It's actually the change from farm employee housing to qualified worker housing is a, is a change in state law. So, and if you, and the way we have it stated in here, we've actually just changed the definition of farm worker housing, from farm worker housing to qualified worker housing. It, if, so it means the same thing, it's intended as the same thing, and it'll function the same way in the, in the code.
Okay, thank you for that. And then my other question is regarding the public outreach. What is, what is required of us to do outreach to, to implement these changes? And, or the outreach or the notice requirement for us?
Yeah. So in this case, they were just implementing items that were already stated in the adopted housing element. So they were minor changes. The way we'll typically do ordinances like that is zoning ordinance changes, we reach out to the BIA and then we'll also post a document, we'll post the document in, on the website to receive public notice. There was no environmental document that we needed to post. What we also did is we also put a notice in the paper in this case that, that the, that the changes were available for public review. They wanted to review them online as well. So that's, those are the extent. The actual, this hearing obviously was also posted in the paper.
Thank you for that.
And Mr. Fracci, just for clarification, that was between May and June seventeenth, where we did all the public noticing, correct? Okay, thanks. Yes, council member?
Yeah, thank you. I just had a follow-up on Deputy Mayor Jenkins hypothetical about two hundred versus one fifty. If I understood, yeah, if the property allowed for two hundred and the developer wanted to do one fifty, the answer was if it's within the zoning, there, it's within their, their right to, to at least pursue a project with that number of units. And then Ms. Peak mentioned, although the state is keeping track, and obviously there's a, there's a statewide policy to, to build more. Do we have any kind of a policy where we encourage developers to build the maximum allowable on these properties? I mean, who, who ultimately expresses an opinion about that, if anybody? So if it's under the hypothetical, you know, could do two hundred and somebody processes a plan for one fifty, is anybody saying, well, you know, we prefer you do fifty more? Or is, or are we just, are we just considering what is presented?
Yeah, we typically do consider what is presented. Typically, I, I think most developments there, you know, they consider the constraints on the site, parking setbacks, and then also market feasibility. In general, you know, even though I think maybe sometimes the total density that's permitted on a property is not fully achieved, I think there are other properties in the city, as you, as, as you've seen come to this council, where there's been residential projects on properties that were previously not designated for residential. So I think in, in general, we're in pretty good shape in terms of meeting numbers and, you know, moving forward and, and going forward with our housing element.
I would just add that I think early in the process, when a conceptual plan gets submitted, and I can think of one in particular where they came in and, and we did have a conversation with them, we think you can do more units than this on that site. But I think it flows to exactly what Joe's talking about. It's a, you gotta consider the acreage and the allowable density, but then you gotta factor in all of the other factors of setback and topography and parking and all that sort of stuff. I think it's usually fair to say that on the market rate development, they maximize their density as much as they possibly can after they figure out all those constraints that limit them. I've never really known a, especially on the multifamily side, a project to underdo what they're allowed to do once they figure out what they can do. Because obviously it's a financial and the number, more units is more potential profit, so. But there, I think like early on in the process, you know, we have sort of those sort of preliminary conversations and.
Well, because there, there's this narrative, we just heard tonight that, that the, that the state is paying attention and the state may call to account. But as we've all said many times, we don't, we don't actually construct houses. We just allow others to do that, right? And so if there's an argument about whether we're doing enough or not doing enough as a city, obviously we rely on the builders building the projects that we approve. So that would be the moment in time where we have a voice in that, right?
One of the other things that we've talked about, and we're not far enough down the path yet on the general plan and then the subsequent zoning ordinance that follows it, is that for a hundred years, it's been city, city policy to create a maximum density in certain areas. And we've had the conversation of in the higher density areas, creating a floor that they at least have to get that much. They may not be able to get to the max, but to create a floor so that we, we do get a higher level of density. That's, that's actually pretty, I won't say it's unique now because there are probably some cities that have done it, but that's been a change in how cities have approached density in recent years. And we, and I think it'll be part of our conversation as we go forward.
Okay.
And we actually, that's great that you brought that up, Jack, just for FYI, in our mixed use zones, we actually do have that floor. So you have to build between twenty and thirty dwelling units per acre on those properties. Can't go below that twenty.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just one brief one.
Yes.
I thought I understood what qualified employee housing meant until we started substituting agricultural for that. So my assumption was qualified was referring to the housing. Does it, does it, is it an adjustment to how we define individuals based on AB five and who is determined now to be an employee and not?
Correct. It's just the way it's defined in, in state code.
Okay, so it allows for a broader spectrum then? If the state says this is a qualified employee, then this is the housing that's permitted by our zoning?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? No. Okay, this is a public hearing. Do we have any speakers? No. I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Move approval of the item. Do I have a second? Oh, second?
Second, yes.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Oral communications. No other speakers. Okay, moving on to item twelve, we meet on Friday. Item number thirteen, Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, Mayor. We met in person with the League of the San Diego Division. And we had a presentation on where we're at with the implementation of AB thirteen eighty-three. That's the transition, the organics. And I did have the opportunity to talk to Jack. And I was thinking that we should have an update. We've presumably transitioned from the residential households and we are in the process of transitioning our businesses. So we were thinking maybe at the beginning of the year, we would get an update. We did have a CalRecycle representative and I was very glad to hear that they are taking input as they put together what their, I guess, what is it? Compliance, how they will enforce, right? Compliance in the future. And I was glad to hear that they are receiving input and we as a city are providing that input. So I was very glad to, to hear that. And so I think if we ask for an update, would that work for the rest of the council members? For the mayor? And then the other?
Wait, wait, I had, I had a quick question on, are you talking about with Edco?
Well, I'm thinking with Edco and as a city where we're at with, with our progress on the implementation.
Yeah, I, and I talked to them. So one of the things, Jack, maybe when you reach out to them, that would be a very good idea. You know, we're doing better than a lot of cities. A lot better than, I mean, I don't even think San Diego or Encinitas had actually moved forward on this yet. But I, I was talking to a group of Boy Scouts last night when they came on a tour and they didn't even know about it. And when I was talking to, at the end of the school year last year, I had gone to La Marada Academy for actually a, a recycling event where they were talking about all the different ways, you know, to recycle and all of that. But they didn't even talk about organics. And so I brought it up to all of the groups that I met with and there was a lot of them. And the principal had said, yeah, that's a really good idea because I said, we, we need to get the kids involved, especially at La Marada Academy. I, I think honestly at all of our schools, you get the kids educated about it and then they take it home and then they want to do the right thing. So, Jack, when we talked to them, I know I had brought this up to Jim Ambrosia, Ambrosia over at Edco. If we could maybe talk to him about that as, as to if they have reached out because he indicated that they were going to work with San Marcos Unified in something. And so anyway, just to find out what they're doing on that. So when they come back, maybe they'll have an update for us on that. Okay.
No, I, I agree. I think it's really important to include the, the education at the school level. The other item that I wanted to point out is that we did receive a request from the League. They want to hear from us. They have a survey. It's open until the eighteenth. And I can maybe have Phil or somebody circulate that so that everybody has the opportunity to, to respond. And this will help them put together the League priorities for, for next year.
I already received it.
Did you already? Okay, great.
You already did it, council member? Good for you, or Deputy Mayor, good for you.
I gotta do it right when I get it or I don't do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I don't know if everybody got it, but it was a few days ago.
I did get it, I received.
It was a few days ago.
I saved it, but I haven't gotten back to it yet.
Then maybe Phil, if we could have another so that?
A reminder would be good. We've got one more week. Thanks, yeah.
No, and so the last day is October the eighteenth for that one.
One week. Okay.
Okay, and we are scheduled to meet in November.
Okay. North County Transit District, Deputy Mayor.
We meet next week.
Okay. North County Dispatch, Joint Powers Authority.
We don't meet until the end of November.
Okay. Let's see, what's next? Clean Energy Alliance.
Meet next week.
Okay, next week. City Council Business Visit. Yes, we had one today. Where is it? Okay. Do you want to start or do you want me to start?
Go ahead, thank you, Mayor, go ahead.
Okay. So today we were at Avoya Travel, which was very cool. It's right across the street. Steph actually got to walk over there, probably the first, first business visit, visit that they've been able to do that. Anyway, it's a family originated company. The grandparents started travel tours in Hawaii during the nineteen sixties. And they brought business, they brought their business to California in the nineties and repositioned themselves as a travel agency. Prior to San Marcos, Avoya Travel was in Vista off of the seventy-eight. And the internet transformed their business model. And they shifted their focus to online as the internet grew, but made sure to keep a human touch point. And many of the world events affected Avoya in, in the new millennium. And the, with, with the internet, nine eleven and COVID nineteen and all the changes in the landscape in air travel. So they were very excited to have us there today. They are doing very well. Would you like to hand, I'll hand it off to you, Mr. Musgrove?
Their, their sales pre-COVID twenty nineteen and before were up to four hundred and eighty-five million. They had a hundred and seventy employees and thirteen hundred independent contractors. And that's not, of course, not just San Marcos, they're all, all over the country. But since then, their sales are down to four hundred million with a hundred and fifteen employees, twenty offshore and a large number of independent contractors. They anticipate bringing that number closer to four hundred and fifty million after this year is processed through. And we asked about AB five and the impact it had and it said it's actually been a plus for them. Because it, it gives greater flexibility for the off-site workers. You know, the, the definition of employees, when you, you have that, you're under the direction of the company and you're making decisions for the company. Well, they're not doing that anymore. They're just doing the preliminary work. Then it goes back to the specific employees to do the, the final working. And it, it seems to be very, something that's working very well for those independent contractors. They have a hard time hiring. We talked to them about engaging the different community colleges and the university and offering up work projects such as internships, off-site credits and whatnot, and even down to the high school level where there could be career opportunities for some of our juniors and seniors that are looking to find good employment in San Marcos, remain in our community and continue to work with our company. They are extremely welcoming, a family-owned business. They did say they were in the process of looking at some, a merger acquisition, but I don't think it's going to change the business model and I think the family would remain on the board. It's a fantastic company. And I asked a question about how they interact with other services and I mentioned, you know, Carnival Cruise. Any, any commercial cruise company that you might, travel company that you might consider if you want to go on to Celebrity and, and book your tour? I was in timeout there. Apparently I asked too many questions, hard to believe. They do all that for you. So if you were to approach them and say, I want to go to South Africa for two weeks, I want to, they would be able to pull up all the information for you, everything from your trip to the airport, flights, the tour and back. That's exactly what they do. They provide that intermediate and then overall service for anyone who wants to travel. It's really kind of a nice product. And they had quite a few workers onsite. Their facility is, is fabulous. They have the entire floor and the way they have it laid out is terrific. I'm not sure if we have all the pictures, but that room where I was sitting, that allows any employee to go in there. That room is completely soundproof.
And they have several of them.
Yes.
I think they have about seventeen thousand square feet right now.
It's, yeah, it's considerable.
And they, they will probably end up, you know, growing a little bit. And they, they actually, I think they said they have thirty-five onsite right now. A lot of people are still working from home. But they do have space, or they do have a hundred and fifteen employees here in San Marcos. And I thought it was very interesting that the entire executive committee, or the executive team, all are San Marcos residents. So, and they really, really love our business climate here in San Marcos and, you know, just, you know, being part of the community. So that was great to meet them. Very excited to be here. And they, they were so excited about us being selected the, one of the top twenty-five places for families to live. They were all just really thrilled about that's our community. And they really, they really like to be engaged in our community. And, oh, they're going to be connected by our, our economic development team to the San Marcos Promise, Palomar and CSU to figure out how to bring some of that talent up, local talent, to help them with their needs.
They are right.
And internships.
They're right now aggressively looking for marketing specialists.
Yep.
So you don't necessarily have to have a business degree in marketing, but if that's your forte, you like that interaction with the potential customer base, they're looking to hire.
Ed, how do you, how do you spell the company name? I, I didn't get it.
A-V-O-Y-A. As you leave, they are across West San Marcos Boulevard from us.
Kitty corner to us.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to say, you said they were looking for more talent. I was going to say the San Marcos Promise has a future fair coming up and that might be a perfect.
I'll discuss with them.
We have Tess on it. Tess is on it. She's already, she's already working on it, yep.
You know, we, we go there to showcase the business, but I think when we left, they were more, they were very optimistic about the visit considering that, that the potential there to, to engage the community and build their business through a simple afternoon meeting or mid-morning meeting was really apparent.
We were really vibing in the meeting. It was, it was very good. It was, it was exciting. Okay. Let's see, San Marcos Creek Project update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Very much like the, the last report, a lot of utility work going on. You'll start to see lots of piles of dirt where the retaining walls are going. It sort of consolidates the ground underneath it to get the, so when those foundations are ready to be done, we're working off a solid surface. And the form work for the bridge superstructure will continue to happen in a few weeks. That'll be finished and the bridge will be ready to go forward beyond the form work, so.
Yay. Very exciting. It seems to be going somewhat fast, but not if you're living over there. It's not going fast. Yay. Very exciting. It seems to be going somewhat fast, but not if you're living over there. It's not going fast. But it does feel like it's, it's moving forward.
You know, it seems to be going slow, though, and I need to change the subject, is that Discovery San Marcos Boulevard project.
The Pork Chop?
The Pork Chop and, and then the across the street is, is a lot of impediment, the widening at the entrance to High Tech.
Yeah, that's part of the project is the adding of that turn lane on that side of the street.
Yeah, that's become really the bottleneck. Is there, what's, what is the timeline on that? Just, not to put you on the spot, but.
Three months, four months?
Three months, okay. All right, thanks, sorry.
Short, short-term pain, long-term enjoyment when we, that will actually alleviate a lot of the bottleneck there once it's completed.
We'll all be kind of done at close to the same time, which will be very nice.
Only been working on the Creek Project, trying to get it moving along and actually funded and worked on for 10 years. I mean, you know, these projects take a long time. I mean, unfortunately, they're so big, especially that one, being that it's our largest capital improvement in our city's history. Okay, any council commentary? Okay, with that.
Just go, just go Padres.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Oh, and.
Phillies.
We definitely, I, I think Friday night, am I, am I right? Friday night, Joe's going to be pitching. Councilmember Musgrove's nephew, might I add?
If the schedule goes as anticipated, then yes, so.
He was on fire the other night.
Ideally, it will be the third win of five and that will win this series, but we'll have to see.
Awesome. All right. With that, this meeting's adjourned.